We are here to open this regular Board of Education meeting for Washington Unified School District on June 8th, 2023. And we are going to do our Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please lead us in the pledge, Ms. Arty Streek?
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
The United States of America, the republic, one nation, God is all.
Thank you for letting me put you on the spot. Okay, that takes us to our roll call. Vice President Wong.
Present.
Trustee Vanegas.
Present.
Trustee Pazadi.
Here.
I too am here, and Clerk Coffey is not joining us this evening. And that takes us to our announcements of actions taken in closed session. We have Government Code Section 54957 point six, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSEA and Management. Information was received and direction was provided. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, information received. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Superintendent Discussion. And now we have our approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Dr. Hildreth.
Yes, President Kirby Gonzalez, I have two requests. I request that we would pull info item in one. And if we can move action item P1 up to have P1 action taken before our public hearing.
Perfect, after public comments.
Yes.
And for clarification, the information discussion item one, which is the presentation of Measure V, is pulled and will be on the next board agenda, correct?
I do not believe. I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Monique Stovall to provide some clarification.
If possible, we would like to move the Measure Z presentation to the July.
Oh, so not.
So not in one.
So, I'm sorry, so thank you for that clarification. So the change should be in two?
Yes.
And keep in one?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, to clarify, we are approving this agenda, once I get a motion, with N2 pulled, and action item P1 moved after public comments before public hearing. Can I have a motion to approve?
I move.
I second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Vanegas, seconded by Trustee Pazadi. Thank you. And we do not have any communications or celebrations this evening, but we have been... Oh, we should vote on that, actually. Thank you. All right, so we had a first, a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, too. Vote aye. In approving of the agenda. We have no communication celebrations this evening, so it takes us to our association reports. We have WSTA, I don't see Mr. Nepp, there's no report tonight, okay? And our CSEA report, I do not see our president, Daniel Gandara, I do not believe they have a report this evening, but they did send us some communication. So that takes us now to L1, public comments. And I don't have up yet my public comment document.
We do have some requests that have come in. I can call the first speaker, Deborah Abraham, did I say that right?
And I will read first, before you come up, actually, I apologize, let me read the disclaimer that I have to read, and then we'll bring you up, otherwise you're going to be standing here for just a minute. Okay, as a reminder, at our regular Board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the Board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the Board but not read into the record during the meeting. So they will be on the meeting minutes, but they are not going to be read this evening. We have all read those comments that have come through. Members of the public may address the Board on topics of our Board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address the topic within the jurisdiction of the Board. Please know, the Board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The Board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for any item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The Board respects the rights of the members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public Board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public Board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the Board may not prohibit such comments, Board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against the district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. Okay, and welcome. I'm pulling up right now my form, so thank you for doing this with me right now. And you can come up right now, Ms. Deborah, I forget, Abraham. Thank you so much.
Good evening to all. I did submit that form as requested before 3:00. I'm not sure why, what may have happened, but I did check in, and a young man did let me know that I can go ahead and actually begin to speak in this evening. And I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity. Again, my name is Deborah Abraham. These are my sons here. I'm a mother of six children that have attended school, actually five of them graduated through Washington Unified School District. This is my son here. Introduce yourself. Tell me your name.
I'm over here, come over. My name is Abraham, and I got my mom, and I got my nephew, my boy.
What program are you in?
Uh, KI program.
Do you like that program?
Mm-hmm.
What do you like about that program?
I have my program at TAL.
Yes, at TAL. Do you like working?
Yeah, I work in.
What do you work at?
Touching up that.
Yes, I'm telling you. And this is my other son here, Samuel Nelson. Samuel, go ahead, Sam, I'm sorry.
Well, graduated from River City in 2018, and went to UC Davis, graduated first here, now I'm doing at Duke.
The reason I end up coming here this afternoon is to introduce myself, because I have been sitting in the background here at the Board meetings, and I just wanted to say, let you guys know who I am. I'm actually a CAC parent that have been on the Board for over, since 2014. So for me, supporting individuals with special needs is very important. I've gone through the legislators often, allocating funds, and actually bringing funds within our district here as well. And inclusion, that's what it's all about for me. I started Inclusion for Wayne early on, pre-K, within here in the district. And so I know how important it is. Now, inclusion starts not just within the schools, but it also starts in the home and within our community. It is important that we really push on and start early on for our children. And I just want to say, I know that you guys are working on a program for our TK and kindergarten to actually do an inclusion program, but you only think about taking five students. Is there any way that we can do like a push-in to the existing K, pre-K classes that we already end up having? I end up going to Elkhorn and visiting that campus, oh, seeing all those smiling faces, but there's so many of them, I couldn't believe how many children they are at that school requiring service. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know what you guys are kind of looking at, or how you want to do, but if we can utilize some of the existing programs, kindergarten, pre-K programs we have, I really feel it'd benefit our students. Thank you, you guys. Have a good day.
Thank you, Deborah. And I do want to clarify, Deborah, that your comment was emailed to us, however, it does not have the joy of having your children with you, so thank you for that. Okay, Nakiba Gregory.
Hello, I'm a teacher in the district. I've been with the district for 23 years, and this is not a new concern that I have, it's one that's ongoing. I want to address how we handle our eighth grade promotion ceremony. I spoke to one of my students who said they could not participate in the promotion ceremony because they got an F in one or more of their classes. They went to tutoring and tried to raise it, but it wasn't in time. Another one told me that they were not able to participate because of a prior suspension. Our students were not even allowed to watch their peers promote. Most of our students have attended our school since kindergarten, have long-term friendships, and have been part of our community. We are using our promotion ceremony as a reward instead of as a rite of passage. Let's allow our eighth grade students to walk with their peers and to be acknowledged by their families for moving past their K eight years and onto high school. Although I agree that students should behave in school and get good grades demonstrating their understanding of the curriculum, our students should not be punished by not participating in the promotion ceremony, nor should we punish our families who have been looking for this, forward to this for years. We are not here to shame or judge their poor choices or to embarrass them. We are mentors, we want to encourage them to be their best. We know all students are not good at every subject, nor do they always make wise choices, especially when they're in their groups, their friend groups, who are also making poor choices. We know these two students will mature and make better choices, and many will go, will do better in their studies and learn the information they need to learn. We do not need for them to have bad memories of their childhood or to live with regret. Grading is also an issue. I believe in grading for equity, and I believe a student should not receive an F unless they went out of their way to do absolutely nothing. A D minus sends the message that the student did not learn the content or achieve the required grade to pass the class well. Any F grade actually shows that the student failed, and in that case should not be able to move to the next level of the course or to the next grade. We need to be more consistent with grades, more proactive with discipline, and firm on behavior, but every eighth grade student should be able to have their rite of passage to promote with their peers and in front of their families. Thanks.
Thank you, Nakiba. The next speaker I have is John Alvera.
Good evening, Mrs. Gonzalez, Dr. Hildreth, members of the Board, community, parents, educators. We come to bring to light our current situation within our department, which is the transportation of Washington Unified. I have elected to speak, not just for myself, but for our colleagues, drivers, members of the community, just to bring to light the documentation that we have here is making Transportation Department employees financially whole. During the current economy, during the current state of the economy, we have been left behind the times. We ask that you bring us current financially and make us whole. We deserve to be able to live with dignity. Be at the forefront by compensating your team appropriately in order to continue the growth and prosperity of our students and community. We are completely responsible for student safety and well-being while they are in our care. We are mandated reporters with a plethora of responsibilities. Current livable wage minimum in Sacramento County is $55,000 annually for an individual without kids after taxes. Current comfortable wage average in California ranges $67,000 to $84,026 annually for an individual without kids after taxes. This is just to bring to light what we are feeling currently. And I'm sure this has been submitted, so hopefully that everybody was able to get a gist of what this entails, but I personally have elected to speak with everyone here, basically give my personal experience or what I'm dealing with currently. As a employee for the district for, this is my 10th year, as a special needs bus attendant, it's hard, overwhelmingly hard to live alone. I'm a single parent, and to live off of what I live off of is very difficult. I mean, just to give an example, this week I'm going to be homeless. But I speak not just for myself, but for our, our department as a whole. We come here today with our heart in our hands just to bring light of what we're dealing with, and hopefully we can get some attention and get sort of some steamrolling, which this today is the brainchild of one of our drivers here, David Day. He rounded some of us up to come today to at least bring some attention to what we're dealing with here today. This petition has been signed by the entire Transportation Department. We just hope that we can get some attention to what's been brought here and what's been gathered in this document. It's kind of a lot to go off, I can't read the entire thing, it's not a lot, but there are a few more items in here that kind of just display what it's like, I mean, the living wage and what rent is.
Absolutely. Can I, unless somebody else submits a public comment, and then they could also have three minutes to speak, but otherwise, our, thank you for being here, and we would like to have that document, so if you could give that tomorrow, then we will be, ensure that we read it and can see all of your voices on there as well.
Absolutely.
And thank you for being here, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The documents were actually submitted this morning. Daniel, David.
Thank you. Okay, it was not in our public comments email, so we just want to make sure that we all get that too, and that we see it very clearly.
Okay. Do you like the copy that we have?
Yes, if you don't mind, otherwise, if you want to, we can get a copy if that's your only one or your original.
Yes.
Okay, then we'll make sure that we get a copy of it ourselves, from who you've already given it to.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you. Okay. And I do not have that there are any other public comments. Okay, I want to thank everyone for coming and giving your time and sharing with us. That now takes us to, we are moving our agenda item up, so we are moving our action item, the approval of the employment agreement between the Washington Unified School District and Autry Street for the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services commencing July 12th, 2023, and terminating on June 30th, 2026. Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez. Trustees are asked this evening to approve the employment agreement with Autry Street as the Assistant Superintendent of Education Services. We have finalized the agreement this evening, and the contract, if approved, will be posted tomorrow morning. Want to share some background information? The district advertised the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services position from February 10th, 2023 to April 28th, 2023, and received 39 applications. Eleven of the 39 qualified for an initial interview. Initial interviews were held on May 10th, 2023. The panel for the first round of interviews consisted of cabinet members, three site administrators, a CSEA representative, and WSTA's president. Out of the 11 applicants interviewed, four were moved forward to the second round of interviews, which were held on May 16th, 2023. The panel for the second round of interviews consisted of executive cabinet members. A recommendation this evening is being made to approve the employment agreement. Prior to taking action to approve Government Code Section 54953 requires an oral summary of the recommendation for approval of the salary and fringe benefits provided to the Assistant Superintendent. The following items related to the employment agreement and compensation are as follows. The term of agreement, the employment agreement will commence on June 12th, 2023, and terminating on June 30th, 2026. Salary placement, for the 2022-23 school year, the salary of the Assistant Superintendent Educational Services is step five of the certificated manager's salary schedule of A master stipend of $1,000. The district agrees to reimburse the Assistant Superintendent for accrued moving expenses not exceeding $6,000 paid upon submission of receipts. For fringe benefits, the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services will receive a $300 monthly auto allowance and receive district-paid health, dental, vision, and other fringe benefits in the same manner and subject to the same limitations as other district-certificated administrative employees. The district shall pay the annual membership dues for the Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services membership in the Association of California School Administration.
All right, thank you for that. Are there any board questions or comments before we take action? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? I don't have it on my sheet.
No public comments received.
Okay, so with that, can I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Pazadi, seconded by Vice President Wong, and all in favor?
Aye.
I too vote aye.
So at this time, we would like to introduce Autry Streek, and I can give a little bit more information about Autry, we're excited to announce this appointment, and thank you to trustees for the approval. Ms. Streek has served as an educator for more than 24 years, with experiences ranging from second, third, and fifth grade teacher. She's been a K eight principal, an instructional director, a principal supervisor, a coordinator for employee support and labor relations, and most recently as an administrator in the office of the superintendent for Los Angeles Unified School District, leading the planning and implementation of district-wide initiatives. Her collective experiences bring diverse skills to WUSD, and a proven track record as a consummate professional and an outstanding instructional leader. She is highly knowledgeable of California content standards and the latest pedagogy in the field of education, and embodies a reputation for leading by example. Autry is highly regarded as a fair-minded and supportive colleague and supervisor, whose leadership style is centered on relationships and establishing a sense of identity, connection, and community throughout all levels of her work. She possesses a deep passion for improving academic outcomes for all students, and prioritizes her career as an educator to eradicate inequities for historically underserved students by working to improve learning conditions in schools. Mrs. Streek, Ms. Streek's extensive experience in public education will be a welcome addition to Washington Unified School District, and will go a long way to support the district's promise of delivering equity, excellence, and empowerment for every student, every day. Please join me in welcoming Autry Streek to the WUSD family.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam President and other Board members, Superintendent Hildreth, students, families, staff. It is with great honor and humility that I say thank you first, first and foremost for your vote of confidence, and I'm looking forward to serving the students and their families in the Washington Unified School District. So thank you very much.
Welcome, and we know too that you have, you're moved up your time, and you're jumping right in and getting to go on a conference with our administrators, and so thank you for that, and thank you for being here. All right, that now takes us to our public hearings. We have our public hearing for the Washington Unified Local Control Accountability Plan, which is our LCAP, and that is with Stephanie Groot, the Director of Compliance and Accountability. Welcome, Stephanie.
I saw it.
I'm rebooting.
Okay.
Oh, good lord.
It went away. We are having some issues with the pieces.
If you want to just...
I know. And if it goes out, you want needle. Okay, good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Board members, Dr. Hildreth, our wonderful people in the audience, thank you for having me here this evening for our Local Control Accountability Plan public hearing.
Down.
All right, so tonight is our public hearing, and we are here to solicit recommendations and comments of members of the public and the Board. And we're going to go over the budget overview for parents, as well as cover the parts of the LCAP, the plan summary, the engaging educational partners, the goals and actions, as well as increased and improved services and action tables.
It worked very rehearsed, I think you pressed pause.
I don't think it's off.
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, I apologize. And as far as our alignment to our strategic plan, throughout the year, we've brought forth presentations and really looked at how do our, does our LCAP align to our strategic plan? So through the goals for student success, as well as the equity principles and the four pillars, you can see that all the boxes are checked green, because truly within our district, this is the work that we are doing. With our strategy map, you can also see here throughout our pillars tonight, as I share, you will see these in our actions and our goals and in our reflection. So as a reminder, in regard to the Local Control Accountability Plan, it really is a plan that supports our student outcomes, it's our opportunity to talk about our how, what, and our why. In 109 pages. You have seen this before, this is just a, just a slide that shows our timeline, it really indicates that we are in our second year of our 21-24 LCAP, and as we continue to go through and look at our needs, our goals, our actions and services, and our evaluation through the input, and we are continuing in that cycle. Next year, we will actually be in our third year of this three-year plan, and we will also get to write a new three-year plan, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like later. With our budget overview for parents, and this is really intended to help parents in the community understand the budget, and I'm going to turn this part over to Billy, who is going to go over our...
No, let Mario do that. Good evening. Okay, the total revenue projected for the district next year is 139 million. 95.3 million of that comes from our local control funding formula. Of that, 95.3 million, 17 million is generated from our, the enrollment of our foster youth education learner loan. Some stuff that's not included in the LCAP, district-wide personnel costs, our step and column increases, cost of utilities, transportation budget, food services budget. Total of expenditures in the LCAP is 19.9 million. Okay, this is an update of the current year, the 22-23 expenditures that we've spent on actions to increase or improve services for our high-needs students. We're checking 11 points, almost 7 million in our expenditures for our high-needs students.
Okay, as we look at the LCAP, I'm going to actually reference page numbers as well, and so for those who are in the audience, on the board agenda, the LCAP draft, LCAP is listed, so we can go back and... So we can go back and forth if you want to follow up with those pages of the 109 pages. So with the LCAP components, there are really five major parts of it. We have our plan summary, our engaging educational partners, our goals and actions, increased or improved services, as well as our action tables. Within our plan summary, the parts include the general information, which really gives a description of the plan. It talks about the demographics, the history of our district, has some information about West Sacramento in there, as well as the alignment to the strategic plan. In the reflection section, it's an opportunity for us to share our story with some of the successes and identified needs. And we did highlight just a couple of the successes here, including our graduation rate, which is higher than the state rate, as well as the development of our newcomer center. As far as reflections identified, our identified needs, we looked at the dashboard and found that there's a need to look at our chronic absenteeism. We've heard presentations on that as well, and our academic performance. Our highlights, which begin on page 13, give a brief overview of the key features, such as our professional development of the leadership team, as well as continued focus on MTSS, our focus on multi-tiered system of supports. And then we also have a new goal, a new required goal this year for our foster youth students. The last section of the plan summary is the identification of schools that are eligible for comprehensive support and improvement, which we call CSI. And that is Riverbank, Westfield, and Yolo. In our engaging educational partner section, which begins on page 16, this includes information from the initial engagement, again, that began back in 21-24. So we went through a process then, as well as some updated information on what has occurred this year, including our engagement with our required groups, educational partners. They used to be called stakeholders, so if you see that word, it's our educational partners. And in this section, some of the examples were our meetings with our English Language Parent Advisory Committee, which we call LCAP, EL PAC. So we have to throw in more acronyms, as well as a summary of the feedback that was provided. For example, in meeting with our SELPA, there was a need for continued professional development for general education, as well as special education staff to meet the needs of our students, as well as it takes the opportunity to describe the aspects of the LCAP that were influenced by the information that we received. For example, Goal Five is specific to building the capacity of staff to support our foster youth students. In our Goals and Actions section, for each of the past goals, the Year Two outcomes were added. So this is just one example. This one's taken from Goal One, where previously we had metric baseline Year One, which was last year. We've now added Year Two outcomes. Next year, we will add our Year Three outcomes, and they should match our desired outcomes and we'll be able to give a report of a totality of our three-year plan. These metrics were shared at a previous board meeting when we did our LCAP update. So for the next part, the next several slides actually go into each of the goals and actions, I'm sorry, into the actions for each of the goals. So for Goal One, which is our college and career readiness goal, this section explains any changes in the metrics or actions that were made from previous years. So with Goal One, one of the changes to the metrics was that we removed professional learning as a metric because it's an action. So it's not the professional learning as a metric, it's an action. And so that just helped to make sure that we were following through with the intent of what that item was, as well as, I'm sorry, when we look at the changes for Goal One, those begin on page 38. The actions that were changed include, there were amounts that were revised to reflect the estimated expenditures. So in working with fiscal, really looking at if we said we were going to spend a certain amount of money, were we continuing to spend that? Did we need to continue to spend that so that we could be more accurate on what we were spending? As well as some of the actions that were part of other plans were actually removed because they are no longer part of those supplemental concentration dollars. They may be under a grant, so those are no longer actions. And then within Goal One, there were several actions that were related to special education, and those were actually moved to Goal Four, which was a new goal last year. So some of the goals had to do with co-teach, and instead of having that in Goal One, it's now in Goal Four. We just found that that would be a better way to address it within that goal, as well as one of the actions was to increase the intervention specialist to also be funded through supplemental concentration dollars. For Goal Two, no changes were made to the metric. However, beginning on page 48, the changes to the actions include, again, our amounts were revised so that we could be accurate in those amounts, as well as any of the actions that were part of other funds, such as grants, were removed. Several actions were then combined. When we wrote our LCAP, we did not have our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Department. And so previously, within Goal Two, you could see line items that now are in our EDI department, our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Department. There's also staffing within that EDI department, as well as a campus security monitor. One of the items, the diversity recruitment, is now considered contributing. We had presented that last year, it was something that implemented this year. And then in doing the research with HR, it is now considered a contributing action, which means that it's going to meet our foster youth, EL, and low income in consideration. Also, our National Board certification was included, as was requested. Through Goal Three, changes begin on page 53. There were no changes to the metric, but the changes in the actions, again, with that revision, as well as specific names of trainings were removed. So I think in one of them, it says there's a specific training that staff will attend. They did attend it this year. And then in talking to the directors that oversee and provide that training, there was a need to maybe open it up to other trainings and not just list a specific training. Thank you, Mario. Goal Four begins on page 48. And then in discussion with educational partners, we did find that it made more sense to move the actions that were previously in other goals that related to special education students with disabilities into this goal, as well as there was a need for additional staff to support tiered support within the schools. Okay. Those were our previous goals. Goal Five begins on page 58. This is a new required goal for us. The metric section, as you can see in the example of the top on the presentation, this is not the full metric, it's just an example. You can also see that Year One outcome data is not present because Year One of this three-year plan would have been last year, and it's a new goal this year. So it just states that it's a new goal, as well as Year Two, because we don't have that outcome data yet. The metrics for this goal were taken directly from the California dashboard. So you can see that reference in the metric, as well as the baseline data. I do want to remind the board that this data is from the 2022-23 school year, and the dashboard is released in September using data from the previous year. The actions listed, such as the example on the bottom of this slide, do not reflect all of the expenditures or actions that support our students. In working with the Director of Special Programs and Student Services, as well as the Foster Youth Outreach Specialist, we continue to provide support to our foster youth through research-based actions and best practices. All right. Our increased or improved services, this is where we talk about our contributing and the use of our supplemental concentration funds. As we previously heard with the budget overview for parents, the portion of our LCFF funding is our supplemental concentration funds. These funds must be dedicated to improve or increase the services of foster youth, English learners, and/or low-income students. Some examples, and it says examples because this is not all that's listed in our LCAP, include additional staffing, professional development to build capacity of staff, support for students and families, as well as things with our English learners, such as our newcomer center, our wellness centers. Those are all considered contributing factors. The action tables, which were the final main component of the LCAP, these were actually added last year. There are five tables, and they contain the fiscal information for the actions of what we say last year, which is this year, and what we are saying we are going to spend for next year. So the next steps, and I realize that's an overview of the LCAP. We are requesting feedback. We request that we will be bringing back and requesting board approval at the LCAP on June 22nd with the budget, as is required. And then upon approval, the next steps are that we send our LCAP to YCOE, Yolo County Office of Education, as they do approve our LCAP. And then we will post it on our website in both English and Spanish. And then as we continue to look forward to next school year, we will continue to monitor and review the current LCAP, as well as develop our next three-year.
All right, thank you. And I'm looking, and I do not see any public comments for this item. So I will take it to board comments or questions. Vice President Wong.
Yeah, I'm late to the game reading the 109 page document. One of the things as board, as one of the few things in our budget plan, right? Can you talk to me, and this is just top of mind, transparently, just to the community, is that Yolo, we keep on talking about Yolo and equity issues and the needs there. And was there a consideration from the community, that I've heard there is, that Yolo should have more support services, like a full-time social worker in addition to versus being split because of the needs of the student? Was that part of the discussion in Year Two evaluation? Because I know that that's been discussed.
That was not brought up in any of the meetings, but it's something to the purpose of this meeting.
Yeah, no, it's just a consideration. But it's top of mind. And then I had a question, well, thank you for going over the new goal for foster youth. That was a state requirement, or that was, sorry, mine. I've been out of the game a little bit. Can you, just for public, you know why that may have?
I do. So as was presented when we did our dashboard information, when we look at the performance of our foster youth over years, there is a need for improvement. It specifically had to do with absenteeism and also academic achievement and suspension data. And those are the metrics that are listed in that goal.
And then my wondering then becomes also, just based on our own data, are students facing homelessness or facing the same challenges? Maybe a consideration of more comprehensive programs around, you know, just chronic absenteeism? In addition to our young people? Sorry, that's it for me as I'm still reading, I'm on page 53 of 109.
Hey, thank you. Those questions, any others? No, any questions from you? Okay, I have, thank you for the National Board piece. A very small shout out and a very big document. I appreciate all the work you're doing. You spoke quite a bit about the work that has to do with students receiving special education support. And I'm wondering if one component of this LCAP and your work is to share with the Community Advisory Committee, the CAC members? And if not, could that be done before it comes back to us? I know we're on break.
Yes, of course, I can work for her.
I also want to thank you, if I notice correctly, that you are, we are continuing with I-Way?
I met with them and we are, yes, we are looking at reconnecting in August and having a conversation of what.
What was your?
No, it was a question. I just wanted to affirm that, and improve your tomorrow, it's been a program that we've. I saw that, I just, it was more with them. Appreciate.
Thank God, I like seeing their posts. Well, thank you for all this. I know it's been a long process over time that things change, and you're constantly having to keep your pulse on all of these requirements and pieces. So thank you. And with that, if there's no more comments, then I will officially close this public hearing. Not take us to our next public hearing. So stay on up because that is our public hearing for the Washington Middle College High School Local Control Accountability Plan. Down with Stephanie Groot, our Director of Compliance and Accountability, and also.
Hi, and good evening, again, President Kirby Gonzalez, Hildreth, board members, community staff. Thank you for being here. Rachel Lane, the principal at Washington Middle College, cannot be here this evening. So I can assure you that if any questions come up that I can't answer or that Billy couldn't answer, then we will get back to you. So thank you. So again, the purpose of this public hearing is to, again, solicit recommendations and comments of the members of the public, as well as to discuss the budget overview and review the components of the LCAP. Washington Middle College's LCAP, draft LCAP in front of you, also aligns to the strategic plan, I can say, in working with Principal Lane. This is language that is being used at the campus and continues to do the work at Washington Middle College. You'll see some differences in Washington Middle College's LCAP, and that is because this is a chance, again, for them as a charter to actually tell the how, what, and the why of the program that is specific to their campus and their charter. With the budget overview for parents, I once again am going to turn it over to Billy Duba about the.
Great. Hello. Okay, similar to the districts, displayed the same way. The total revenue projected for the Washington Middle College High School is 2.1 billion. The great majority of that, 1.9 million, is from a local control funding formula. And of that, 387,000 is generated on the enrollment of our foster youth, education learner, and low-income student. And also similar to the district, stuff not included in the budget for the LCAP is personal costs, step and column, abilities, insurance, service contracts, the operating budget to the Food Service Department, transportation. Total budget expenditures in the LCAP for the Middle College High School is 401,000. And summary for 22-23, budgeted 350,000, and we know that we are going to spend all of it for the improved services of high need students. We're back to this.
Thank you. Okay. The components of the LCAP, there are the same components, it's the same template. So the plan summary, the engaging educational partners, goals and actions, increased or improved services, and the action tables. Within the Washington Middle College LCAP, the vision and demographics you can see in the general information. As far as the reflections with the successes, wanted to highlight the anticipated growth in enrollment and the very low suspension rate. With identified needs, the continued enrollment and recruitment of students, you'll see within that plan summary, the enrollment has increased and then decreased. And so how, in talking to Principal Lane, how do we continue with that enrollment and recruitment? One of the main highlights of the LCAP is that because the LCAP, the Washington Middle College LCAP, contains all of the federal funds, the Title I funds, that no single plan for student achievement is required for Washington Middle College because this is now the single plan.
Less paperwork.
Huh?
Less paperwork.
It also makes the management part, I know Dr. Hildreth talks about a plan should never be something that sits on a shelf. It is, makes it so that it's a little more a living dock. Um, it is, makes it so that it's a little more a living document. So it's going back to one thing and it's in alignment. That's all right. Um, so this is an example as well, um, just one example of where the year. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, with the education, engaging educational partners, Washington Middle College has an advisory committee that is made up of parents, school and college staff, um, the assistant superintendent, who will be part of the committee, um, as well as the dean of the Sacramento City College, West Sacramento Center. Um, and the committee really does review the actions and goals and provides input into this plan. As far as the goals and actions, again, the same with our Washington Unified School District LCAP. All of the year two outcomes have been added and this is just one example from their LCAP. Uh, in looking at the goals and actions within goal one, the changes, um, and there were no changes in the metrics. However, the amounts were revised. We went through and looked at what were the funds being spent for to make sure that they matched, as well as previously I-Ready was in the LCAP and I-Ready is not given at Washington Middle College, so that was removed. With goal two, the changes in the actions for the coming year. Um, of course, we revised that and looked at those estimated expenditures. And then to looking at the average college visits, that amount was actually increased to provide students with the opportunity to visit more colleges. In goal three, um, the family liaison, um, as was part of the previous LCAP was not hired. Um, as when Wa- Washington Middle College looked at the required level of support, they thought that the support could be better met with a different, um, with some different actions. And so for last year, even though that was in the LCAP, that position was not hired. Uh, Washington Middle College has just the three. It does not have five goals because they did not have those required goals for special education and foster youth. For increased and improved services, again, these are the funds, the supplemental concentration funds really goes to support our foster youth, English learners and low income students. Looking at staffing, um, professional development, college tours, the creation and innovation lab, as well as student and family support. Those supports that are going directly to support students such as with books, um, transportation as well to the college. They have the same action tables that we have with different numbers. Um, again, these action tables go through and they review what was previously spent, our estimated actuals as well as what is it, they intend to spend next to school year. Washington Middle College LCAP is a little bit different as the county does not have the oversight of the LCAP. We as the district have that as they are a dependent charter. We request feedback, but then an approval uh, at the board meeting with the budget. Um, it will also be posted both on the district website as well as the campus website in English and Spanish. They also will get to continue to review and monitor the current LCAP as well as develop a new LCAP, a new three-year LCAP next year. Um, and then with the addition, um, with their WASC information, that will then also be incorporated next year into their, so those recommendations will come in there as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't see any public comments.
No public comments received.
Okay, and so I'll bring that to board comment.
So a couple kind of data points I noticed is that the um, A through E, like graduation rate has decreased tremendously. However, the AA degrees have gone up. So there's an interesting balance there in terms of just really trying to unpack what like, like a significant um, considering that we are, you know, at the Washington Middle College, wondering like, un- unpacking that a little bit. However, super proud that our, our graduate are getting AAs where they can just directly transfer to a four-year, a universal. So just really wanted to better understand that. There's a, I don't know what's going on there in terms of it off.
And because the Principal Lane isn't here, so maybe we can have a follow-up with that then.
I, yes, I will, I will definitely get these back and we can report back.
Hey, thank you for the, the presentation. And I'm not sure this is, uh, fits into or has to be within the LCAP. But uh, this year we, we saw that the River City Raiders did a tutoring program to help our believe middle school and elementary students. And they actually presented, they were talking about fulfillment that they got from it. Um, somehow incorporating that, that opportunity uh, for our Washington um, Middle College students to, to also um, see that they are, um, you know, they're, they're thriving in education, how they can also participate and, and engage with our younger, our younger students here in, in West Sacramento.
Good point, and they're so close, they can walk.
And just, the reason I may mention LCAP is because I believe the students at River City were paid as well. So um, they are students.
Just had a question about, um, in terms of the enrollment next, what is our enrollment going to be now? I was just remembering our graduation numbers were relatively small this and, you know, I was just curious as to what, what we're doing next. I know that we've been promoting, you know, attendance and trying to get enrollment at all of our schools. But one of the other ones is our little hidden gem in Washington Middle. One of the I'm trying to remember what the contract that we approved was for promotion of um, of, of our communications and, and getting it out to the community members about what this job for kind of community is. The things that I don't know, I, I think that might be a part of our, for district. Do we have that for then to, to Middle?
As, as an LCAP action?
Yeah, well, maybe not as an LCAP action, but in terms of enrollment.
Yes, within that, within the Washington Middle College LCAP and it talks about the need, there is a need to continue to recruit students and, and they did identify that as a need. Does that, did that answer?
I think, I think so. And also we can provide that update of there are very specific actions that Washington Middle College has um, completed this year just in terms of enrollment. So we can uh, share what the projected enrollment is when we come back.
Okay.
We're discussing over, tutoring is in there, but we didn't know if it was for the teachers or the students. So just clarifying.
Peer tutor, peer teacher. And that one is also looking at how do we have students come back? I do know this because I helped with a, a different grant with Washington Middle College. How do we help students who were, um, who are currently in college, who have left our district, come back and help students who are currently at Washington Middle? So let's hear a lot of.
No, yeah, thank you for that. Just affirming, um, and it looks like our, right now at this point, we have about 65 incoming freshmen. Um, versus 75 of last year and the goal is 70. How to pick up 10 more, five more.
I know from, yeah, and I think that can be a conversation for later as well off the LCAP. But I do know that sitting in Principal Lane's office, she was showing me the numbers and that COVID was very disruptive. Um, but I know that that's like her number one goal. She's super, she even enrolls her own child and pulled them from a neighboring district. So she's working hard on that.
That first gen students going to college, like that's just.
It's a wonderful opportunity.
The fact that, I mean, the celebration of like, all the AA degrees that we saw from first gen students and the ability to just save money. I'm like, oh, I, my kid.
And for the first year, I know it's a little off, but for the first year, the graduates of Washington Middle, along with Yolo, joined River City High School to visit all of the campuses in their graduation gear. And just to have that presence, I think is, is just one more way to build community and build visibility for everyone there. Thank you. All right. Nothing else? All right, we'll close this public hearing. And thank you, thank you both. And that now takes us to our third public hearing of the evening, um, which is the public hearing of Washington Unified School District 2023, 2024 adopted budget. And that is with Monique Stovall, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, this evening I'm joined by our Director of School Services, Billy Duba, to present our 2324 budget. This is a public hearing, um, and we will come back at a later time in June, in June. We plan to come back for adoption. Next slide. So we'll start with um, a purpose slide. Uh, this evening, as I shared, it is a public hearing for the 2324 adopted budget. In our, our, in our evening, we'll talk about legal requirements, core messages. We'll provide a summary of the budget. We'll discuss multi-year projections and then our next. We always want to show the linkage with the plan, our alignment. Because basically we need money for everything that we do to be able to support our students. This, excuse me, this aligns with all aspects of our excuse me, and it also aligns, as I shared, with all aspects of the plan and our priorities. Next slide. We always have our annual budget cycle and we are beginning the budget cycle again at the adopt. So with the legal requirement, our adopted budget, it shows our estimated revenues and expenses for the 23, excuse me, 2223, that's also is our S. And then it shows our projected budget for next year and the subsequent two. This is a two-step process. So this evening we have public hearing. And then on June 22nd, we'll come back adopt.
May I have you speak into the microphone so the audio can pick you up on the recording? Yes, thank you.
So our core messages. Excuse me. So there are important factors. Thank you. There are important factors that um, impact our district budgets. Thank you. And budgets throughout the state. Excuse me. These key factors include declining enrollment, attendance loss, expiring one-time funds and personnel investments. And we'll go through these to be able to provide you some key information related to these core message. Next slide. So our enrollment projections, and we did just in the previous presentation, talk about enrollment. Um, earlier this year, we did have a presentation from a demographer about changes and shifts in our enrollment. And next year, we are anticipating about 144 students fewer than we had this year. Over the next few years, we're looking at almost a 600 student decline. That's about an 8% decline. California-wide, we are seeing a decline throughout the state, uh, about an 8% decline over the next 10 years. Why? The number one factor is declining birth. That's happening throughout the state and of course here in West Sacramento. Next slide. Our average daily attendance, average daily attendance is what we're funded on. So the number of students who attend school each day is how we receive our funding. About 92.1% of our students attend school each day. Luckily, with declining enrollment, we kind of have a little bit of a soft landing that's provided to us from the state. And we are able to base our funding off of a three-year average to calculate our. And so therefore the orange part of this, this table um, is what we're funded on. So we're funded on the three-year average. Next slide. Washington Middle College, in the previous presentation, there were questions about what enrollment is looking like. Enrollment next year, we're projecting about 151 students. That's in line with where that was this year. Because of the work that Principal Lane is doing and other factors, we're hoping to be able to begin to. However, in charter schools, they're funded on their actual ADA. So they don't get to use an average of the past most recent three years. It's the number of students who attend each day. That's their funding. And about 86% of our students at Washington Middle College attend school each. Next slide. So the third factor, we've talked about enrollment, we've talked about attendance that affects our budget is our expiring one-time funds, specifically our COVID funds that we've received over the past few years. Um, in our budget for next year, we have about $14 million remaining of our 14, uh, excuse me, of our COVID funds that we need to expand basically next. So by September 30th, 2024, we will uh, need to expend that money and we anticipate that we will expend that money to support our students. The three remaining types of COVID relief funding, there are in-person instruction, there are expanded learning opportunities grant and our SER 3. It's our elementary and secondary school emergency relief number. We have obligated every penny of this money to be able to support our education programs, specific salaries, our after-school programs, and especially with our SER, as you all know, we've made an investment into our staff to be able to provide a, um, an increase for next year. Next. So this leads us to our personnel investments. So forecasts show that ALPERS, that's our retirement system for our classified employees, the employer contribution rate, what we contribute to be able to support our employees after they retire is expected to increase by 2% over the next couple of years. California minimum wage is increasing. It's related to the Consumer Price Index. Cost of doing business, for lack of better words. And so we anticipate continued increases in the minimum wage. We have about 1.8 million in salaries and benefits through our one-time funding that's expiring. And then last but not least, we're making staffing investments to support our equity-based. Next slide. At this time, I'll pass it over to Billy to go through some of the details in our budget.
Hello. All right, when creating the budget, uh, there's some key assumptions that we use. Um, we project an increase at our local control funding formula as a result of a 8.2% cost of living adjustment. Um, our expenses were included in increased salary and benefits um, from negotiated salary increases and additional staffing investments. And we also uh, included the final year of the COVID relief expenses. Um, other things we considered, the changes in the Local Control Accountability Plan. And uh, the governor's May revision had some changes to the California budget, which include decreases to some of the one-time block grant. Next slide, sir. Um, okay, the revenues. Um, our budget consists of pretty much two parts. Uh, we have an unrestricted budget and a restricted budget. The unrestricted budget is primarily funded through the Local Control Funding Formula or LCFAB. Um, and that's um, unrestricted. It's for any legally allowable youth. Um, then we have our restricted budget, which is comprised of mostly the one-time fund. 39 million. Um, our combined revenue for 2324 is projected to be 139 million dollars. Uh, expenditures for 2324, on the restricted side, um, we're projecting salary and benefit costs of 69. On the restricted side, we're projecting salary and benefit costs of 69.3 million, which is approximately 80% of the total expenditures, which is pretty much in line with the state of California. We are also projecting an 18 million operating costs. Includes books and supplies, which are your materials, tech book, services, operating expenditures, which is contracts, utilities. We have capital outlay, 2.5 million, which is construction type project. Our total budget for 2324, unrestricted and restricted combined, is 130 million. Next slide, please. Okay, if we look at the revenues and expenses, just shared on the previous slides, and then calculate the difference, we show an excess or deficit amount. As a result, the unrestricted budget, projecting an excess of 12.6 million. But then you got to factor in the contribution to our other program, primarily our special ed, special education budget for our special needs students, which brings our net decrease to the unrestricted fund balance for 2324 to 3.3, negative 3.3 million dollars. Restricted budget, most of those revenues and expenses are from expiring one-time funding. But the restricted balance is shown to be increased by 12.1 million to give us a combined budget or fund balance increase of 8.8 million dollars. Okay, now we're going to look at the fund balance. The beginning fund balance is where we're predicting our budget to end in the current year. So at this time, we're projecting our unrestricted fund balance for 23, 22, 23 to end at 15.1 million, which will change slightly when we do the unaudited actables and we close the book of the year. Look, 15.1, so pretty accurate, but it's not a firm number yet. But we're applying the change in fund balance from the previous slide to that number to show an ending fund balance of 11.8 million for the unrestricted budget. Then we look at some reserves and commitments that we have for that 11.8 million. We have 43,818 in non-spendable, which like inventory we have on hand and cash we have on hand in our revolving accounts. And then we have 7.8 million set aside as a reserve for economic uncertainty. And we also have 500,000 committed for our post-employment benefits and our permanent program. Total unassigned, total unassigned fund balance is expected to be 3.4 million. Next, we're going to talk about the future, past. Just next. We are required by law to show the next year budget plus two years. Project out. They're not forecasted and they will change. Our best guess is at this time. A couple key messages from our multi-year projection. Monique mentioned, we are anticipating a continued declining enrollment due to our decreased birth rate. And that decreased enrollment is going to lead to decreased revenue. We also have a lot of expiring one-time funding. COVID money is going away. And we need to continue to align our revenue and expenses and continue to meet the board's 6% any fund balance. Okay, this is what the unrestricted budget multi-year projection looks like for next year, 2324, and two additional years. Most of these numbers we just talked about. The important thing on this slide is the bottom line, which is the any fund balance percentage. This is our percent of any fund balance to our projected. For 2324, we're predicting, we're predicting an 8.65% any fund balance. In 2425, that's going to drop to about 7.1%. And in 2526, we're going to be at a 3.88. The reserve amount is 3% is required by state law in the board. As a policy for an additional 3%, gives 6% reserve minimum. That reserve minimum in 2324 is 7.8 million. On average, our monthly personnel cost is 7.7 million. So a 6% reserve will cover approximately one month of. Next steps for our budget, please. Tonight, we're conducting the public hearing. We'll be back on June 22nd to request board approval of our budget. We're going to continue to analyze the budget and make some changes. We're going to close the books for 2223 and see where we're going to actually finish out. And then we're going to continue to work on aligning our. This shows our annual budget cycle wheel. Right now, we're in June, public hearing, and then we'll be back for the adopted budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do not see any public comments. Okay, then we'll take it to board comments. Vice President or trustee Fazati. Never know what you're going to get some days.
Right. Just a couple of questions. Why does Washington Middle College have a lower ADA than basically the rest of the district? Is that just a matter of scale? Because there's only
I guess you could say it's related to scale because if, in essence, depending on the number of students. Number of kids that don't attend. But it's based upon, really, if you have 151 students and not everyone's coming, it equals 80, 86. It's just how we look at it when it's time.
Okay, and then one of the other questions I had is, as we project out, 2526 looks like a pretty grim year. In fact, we're obviously going to have to make cuts. At what point do we start looking at making those cuts ahead of? Like, how far in advance do we, I know, you know, if we start planning now for what 2526 looks like. You know, because we're just barely above the 6% in 2425, right? Like, we're at 7.3. And I'm just kind of curious as to at what point do we start developing strategies for 2526?
I think that's a very important question, and it's important to note that we're already developing strategies for 2526. As you saw in our presentation, it was continued to align our revenue with our, our expenses. And in doing that, we are paying attention to our contracts. We're paying attention to our services. We want to maintain and always increase the level of service to our students. And so what can we look at right now to be able to begin addressing next year's and the following year's financial situation so that we can minimize impact on people as much as possible?
Vice President.
That's your correct. Can you explain what the negative in the other financing is over the next three years? Because it's 16 million, 16 million, around, like. Okay, so where are we losing money on financing and help us and the public understand? It's on the three-year projection.
So the 16 million, 16 million on slide 23. I believe that is our contribution to our students who receive, students with disabilities.
That's our contribution. That's our next.
The special education. Because it is not adequately funded.
I mean, I know people don't like that word, but sorry, I've been trained to.
It's, it's the amount of unrestricted general fund that we contribute to our restricted to support our students with disability.
Because the Fed's enough money.
That's exactly.
As a reminder, what was the percentage? I remember we were, we were just advocating in Washington DC for this, that the federal government pay at least 40%. And they were currently paying the eight.
The highest is the eight.
Yeah, and so just to make it clear how underfunded we are, even though it's a federal promise, that they're, they're not being there under it.
Federal mandate.
Yes. And we do also have a public comment. Did you have any questions or thoughts? Okay, so we will go back and take a public comment right now with Priya. Anath, am I saying that correctly? Yeah, okay.
I had three points. So the first point is basically the ADA. Now, if the ADA is like, the, the three-year ADA is greater than what is currently, then what happens to those additional surplus funding? You're now going to the students, then what's happening with that surplus funding? The second question I had was like, now, there is one more year remaining for the 14 million that we received under the COVID funds. So I want to know, like, how did you guys decide upon, like, the segregating them into three, three boxes that we saw there? I just want to understand that better. And the third thing I wanted to ask is, the deficit, I'm not still, I mean, you mentioned something about the federal promise was like 40, 40, but we are just getting sick. Is that why we see everything in red? In that budget. I think I have one more point. I don't think so. The 2022 to 2023 was actually shown here properly. I don't think so. We saw the expenditure for the expenditure and the revenues of 2022, 23. And if I'm mistaken, then kindly please correct.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Okay, I have a couple of questions, and then if you want to address any of those pieces, you may as well. One of my pieces, will you help me understand on slide 13, it says 1.8 million in salary and benefits are funded through expiring one-time money? Does that mean that the, that those salary and benefits are expiring because they were, say, one-time funded? Or that the position will run out? Or does that mean that we are continuing to fund positions in our district and budget even though the money won't be there from that revenues?
So we have 1.8 million paid out of our, and salaries and benefits paid out of, currently paid out of our COVID relief funding. And as the COVID relief funding expires in September of 24, we need to create a plan for what we're going to do with those salaries.
Did we, when we posted those specific positions, did they have an end date? Or no? So did they say, for example, this position is for two years or for the amount of time with COVID, or were they permanent?
No, we did not place an end date. And what we actually have done is, for example, with the funding for our paraprofessionals, that funding ran out. And so we're moving it to another funding source, appropriate funding source. And we're moving that to another appropriate funding source as we continue to identify how we're going to move.
Would that be something that you anticipate taking next to the budget subcommittee? Or bringing back here in terms of the plan and what that process will look like?
With the budget subcommittee, also known as our finance subcommittee, that's where we begin to have conversations to get a deeper understanding. But any major decisions need to come to the board as a whole.
Okay, and then I think you touched, my colleagues touched on the other pieces. One more, it was brought up at the last budget meeting. You spoke of, it's a small piece when we're talking about these big dollars. But it was that the, that there was money for special education that had not been spent specifically that could be used for furniture. Is that still the case? Or, or am I reading that wrong, that there was a grant or that we had some money in that?
I would have to go back and research that. One conversation we did have about our special education funding is that we've received a grant that we've had lots of conversations on to be able to support our youngest students who are receiving special services. And Carla and her team and the committee have come up with some really innovative programs to be able to support our students using that.
Perfect. So that will be coming then. Great. Thank you for that. And then if you wanted to touch on the piece of why this doesn't show the current, why the, this current school year and the piece as well about ADA funding.
Absolutely. I think there were four questions. So, and please help me if I've missed something. So this is the 2324 budget. Therefore, we're not identifying in this budget presentation, the 2223 expense. That conversation comes when we close the books, as Billy said, in September. And we'll know our actual expenses for this particular school.
Perfect.
The next question, I believe, was related to our average daily attendance, our ADA, and our three-year average. And so it's not necessarily a surplus of funding. It's just our general funding. It's helping us. It's basically how our funding is and helping us to soften the impact of declining enrollment and especially the declining ADA that occurred after COVID and we're still experiencing. So it's not an extra bonus. It's not an extra anything. It's how the funding works here in California. Another question was.
Funding. Why it is broken into the three-year?
Oh, yes, the 14 million. Thank you. The 14 million dollars, it's not separated based upon us. It's the particular funding source. And in the presentation, it did identify how much we received as a whole and how much is remaining. So the majority of our, so the majority of our remaining funding is in our elementary and secondary school emergency relief, our S R three. And the majority of that funding is identified for supporting our staff and also facilities improvement. All of the funding is based upon pre-planned expenses. It's, we already have an idea of how we're going to use that money to support.
Great.
Yeah, just for the public who's looking for the 2223, it's actually in the other attachment of what your actuals are. Get context of like what our actuals this year will be and what, how that's fed into the next three years. So just want to clarify that staff have attached it in the, in your budget, in your other document.
And may I share, if they're looking in the, the other document, the narrative, it's identified as the estimated actuals because we're not there yet.
Because we're still in, we have a few more weeks, a few more days.
We do. We have a lot of work to do.
This is very complex and a lot of work, a lot of money, and it has to be done absolutely right. So I want to thank you both for all that you do. Because this is essential work that we're all relying on to make the whole district run. So thank you for that. And thank you for always breaking your presentations down in a way that is accessible for us and for the public as well. Thank you. And with that, I will close this public hearing. And now we, as a reminder, for our information discussion items, we have one this evening because we pulled the other. And that is the presentation of Measure V Citizens Bond Oversight, which is our CBOC. And that is our annual report, again with Monique Stovall, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. And guests with a very patient.
So this evening, we are having a presentation from our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, also known as VOC or CBOC. Chair this year, Cindy Kazanis, and she'll present their annual report.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. So, and as far as work for the CBOC Committee for Measure V, this, of course, is your bond that was approved back in November of 2014 and is in its waning days of existence potentially. So as you can see on page two, we currently have eight members of the committee. We were able to convince, or maybe one of the members voluntarily, joined the Taxpayers Association. So we did, we did fill that particular slot, which is a required position for the CBOC. We still have vacancies for senior league, for a senior citizens league member and a business member, which is the same you'll see for Measure Z as well. So those are two areas that have been difficult to recruit for. But we continue to meet. We had two meetings this past year. We reviewed the audit report that is done on an annual basis. And we also reviewed the reports that Canolix does a great job in doing related to expenditures for this bond. And the committee conclusions were the same as they have been in prior years, in such that expenditures have generally been used for the construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or replacement of school facilities, including the furnishing and equipping of school facilities, or the acquisition or lease of real property for school facilities. No funds were used for any teacher and administrator salaries or other school operating expenses. And finally, expenditures, including those coded as undesigned, were spent in accordance with Exhibit A. We are really excited, hopefully over the next year, to see the remaining funds for this bond to be spent down and that the committee will maybe cease to exist one of these days. But you have a great, great leader in, in Ms. Stovall, and she's provided some great, great leadership to the group. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any board, or sorry, are there any public comments? Okay, then I'll go to board comments.
Just want to thank you for your service and your, your commitment to the integrity of the bonds. So always good to see you.
Thank you. It's nice to be here in a capacity that is ready to the community.
Let me just ask a quick question as CBOC. So in terms of the requirement for a senior citizen, what is the age cutoff there?
Cut off or minimum?
Beginning. Okay. So maybe I, so maybe I worded that wrong. Maybe I worded that wrong. Easy, easy. Maybe I worded that wrong. Where do we start? Where do we start?
I would assume it has, if we get back to you, but also it says of a senior citizen, I believe it's of a senior citizen league or or organization. And so the organizations.
An organization.
Yeah, they may actually have.
So if you are under.
Hey, I'm a member of AARP.
That's my point, but you're a board member. So anybody at any age can join AARP. If those of you who are watching and listening would like to join the board, you can be twenty and be part of AARP, and AARP is part of a senior citizen.
Right, I'm just saying.
Just saying, would like folks to know that that, that would qualify them. Would that, is that correct?
I'm, I'm not sure of the age requirements for AARP, but.
There are no age requirements.
Thank you.
I may or may not have a card.
Thank you for letting me know, as, as she shared.
It's a member of a, a senior, senior citizens organization. Thank you. So AARP cardholders or potential, they're having a discount right now.
And it, it is really appreciated. We can see this list of the community members and we know that they're actively working to ensure that they're, that you have members of the organizations that are needed. So this is a very committed group. And thank you for not only doing this work that's very much behind the scenes, but then also giving your evening to be here, as you have done many times.
Can you remind us how long the committee been in?
So the committee, I believe, came into inception after the bond was passed, was likely in two thousand fifteen. There was a period in which there was a dedicated recruitment, I think it was in two thousand eighteen, in which a couple of members were on board. It was one as well as a member who was actually the chair of your other bond. So there are two of us that are doing double. Yes, it has been, it has been.
And the committee began with, I think, twenty, twenty or more, with many, many people. And we do have such a great committee that is committed and really want to make sure that we continue to do so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to the voters who've given us the gift of both of us. Okay, so that takes us down. Then we remove the other information discussion item. So now we are on our consent. Are there any, anybody want to pull anything? Otherwise, you can have a motion.
I move.
Okay, moved by Vice President Wong. Seconded by Trustee Vanegas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you. All right, so that takes us to action. As a reminder, we already voted on Action Item One. So we now have Action Item Two, which is approval of comprehensive, comprehensive communication support services with Lamont Digital. Jorgos Kazanis, Executive Director of Communications.
Hey, are you related to the other one?
There's just a slight relation, yeah. She married him, so.
Oh, she married.
Oh, she knows, she knows.
She married into the family, not married you. Okay, anyways, we're loopy. It's summer.
No problem. It's good to get it out. So, good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, trustees, superintendent, members of the audience. Thank you for having me here. Happy to be here representing our robust communications team in Washington Unified School District. Next slide, please.
How many of you are?
We are small but mighty, but there is nothing small about what we can accomplish. That's what I like to say. So. Real quick, I want to highlight our alignment to the strategic plan in terms of this particular item that we're here for this evening. In terms of our pillars, Pillar B, strong partnerships with families and community, the equity principles. It really does kind of touch on everything on the screen, but cultivating healthy relationships again. And then for the goals, we specifically left it blank because, again, our job in communication is essentially compartmentalized a little bit from traditional services that impact directly in the classroom. And what I mean by that is we're here to tell the story of everything that you see on the screen through the strategies that we use in communications and marketing. Next slide, please. And this again is just a breakdown of Pillar B, which you're familiar with. Next slide, one more time. And the purpose for this presentation this evening is to ask for your approval for the opportunity for the communications team to work with Lamont Digital, along with their subcontractor, Mosaic Communications, to really build a comprehensive communications and marketing plan that is not a one-time occurrence. It's something that we can work with and build, and in terms of a sustainable model, so that it happens annually. Now, what I mean by that is sometimes you see the elements on the screen that are bulleted there in terms of elevating our capacity, elevating the district's reputation, boosting district enrollment, and connecting with hard-to-reach audiences. Sometimes some of the strategies done more traditionally in school districts is a one-time occurrence. But the reality is, and we saw it in the previous presentation as well with regard to our budget, boosting enrollment is something that we have to dedicate a lot of attention to, draw focus on. But it's also just highlighting the voices and the people within Washington Unified and allowing that to do a lot of the marketing and branding for our organization as well. And it really does bring a spotlight on the incredible people that we have in our classrooms, on our school campuses, in our district offices, just across the board that are doing great things and really elevating that reputation just by showcasing the great things that are happening every day. Next slide, please. So I want to also highlight the journey that brought us here today. If you recall, in July twenty-eighth, or on July twenty-eighth of last year, we provided an overview to the school board of our intent to move forward and implement two custom communications and marketing campaigns throughout the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The first of those was specifically highlighted and focused on attendance and awareness. So throughout Attendance Awareness Month in September, we designed a custom one-off campaign that really featured individuals and the voices of folks within Washington Unified, as I previously stated. And we used that through graphics, eye-catching graphics, videos, testimonial-style videos, and allowed it to be a little bit more organic and a storytelling of our why in Washington Unified. And there's a lot of other tools that we use as well that notify families and students when they are potentially lacking a little bit in their consistency with attendance throughout the year. But again, those are very prescriptive and they follow a very specific guideline and format for when those notifications go out. This was kind of trying to tackle that issue from the reverse side. And again, it's telling the story of who we are. The other custom campaign was really focused on enrollment, and it took a lot of the elements from our new strategic plan and the vision and the mission of the school district, wrapping that into a campaign that, again, focused on video, eye-catching graphics, telling the story of who we are. And that was a longer five-month process from about the end of October through the start of March. And then the next piece of that was additional strategies that we incorporated from March through the end of this school year on June first. Next slide, please. And I'm a visual learner myself, so I just wanted to show the linear calendar here or the timeline, where you can see from the point of inception in June of last year through June of this year, where those milestones occurred throughout the school year and where we're at right now, which is essentially trying to set a foundation for future planning and sustainability and consistency and a continuity, really, of these services. Next slide, please. Now, I also want to remind everyone that this is some examples of some of those assets that were developed throughout these processes, throughout the campaigns. These ones are specifically focused on Attendance Awareness Month. We did a combination of really pilot testing, because this was the first time that we were able to do something of this scope in Washington Unified. And what we tested was how things worked with a single language, for example, English that you see on the top left, how things focused in a single language but non-English, for example, Spanish on the top right, a combination of both static and motion graphics. And then on the next slide, please, you can see other examples of where other languages were also incorporated, whether it was Russian or Farsi. And again, trying to do a combination of multi-language pieces, single-language pieces, whether it's just Spanish, just English, just Russian. And on the next slide, you'll see just examples of some of those testimonial-style videos that we created to really promote different programs and people within Washington Unified that tell our story and really want to attract families to our district because we, we do have phenomenal people in our schools doing great things. And real quick on the next slide, I was going to highlight some insights from that Attendance Awareness piece. And there's a lot of data that we can gather and share and metrics from these more digital campaigns. And that's the beauty of it, is we can measure everything in terms of click-throughs and engagement. But this is just a very quick flyby of what we saw just in that thirty-day period in September. And for those that aren't familiar, in terms of followers, those are individuals in the community or online that specifically have followed the district's social media pages to stay up to date with regular updates and posts that we put out. So that grew by seventy-five individuals across the board. Total engagements is individuals that interacted with our postings, one way or another, whether they liked it, disliked it, shared it, did something with it. It's an actual engagement. Impressions, that is the amount of times that we actually were able to put postings out there, and they were essentially just posted. And that's kind of the audience that sees that. Or, I'm sorry, that's just the posting. And then of that ninety-one hundred and forty-one, the sixty-four hundred is individuals that actually saw the postings. So it was posted, or these postings and those assets were posted over nine thousand times over the course of thirty days. And then those interactions were seen sixty-four hundred and actually engaged with eleven hundred and fifty-one, which is actually phenomenal for our school district. On the next slide, please. I wanted to highlight some key takeaways, at least from that specific campaign. I'm going to fast forward to the bottom four. So our top audience growth was on Instagram, which is a very younger demographic and audience. Just think of it as a student-centered kind of platform. Our second highest growth was actually on LinkedIn, which I'm excited about because that's something that we have been dedicating a lot of attention to over this past year to really beef up our efforts to promote the district on that more professional and career-focused platform. And that's also great because it ties into our efforts to really attract and retain great individuals in Washington Unified. Multilingual designs did actually better than Spanish-only designs. So again, we were testing the waters, we're trying to see what our community here in Washington Unified is gravitating towards, what they're engaging with, what they like. And that allows us to fine-tune and plan for the future. And then the other thing that was amazing is those short, those short-form testimonials. The feedback that we have and really the thought process behind them is really to create this, I know that person kind of response from the people that see it. And if you followed our social media pages throughout this past year and you saw the engagement that we got from videos, especially from individuals that featured our amazing counselor, Frida Clark, Jody Blevins, our school bus driver, those are just two individuals that come to mind. It literally went viral for our community. I mean, you had people that were commenting and seeing these individuals, familiar faces. And it's a great opportunity to just shed light on those great folks again. Next slide, please. Now, when we go to that period on the timeline from March through the end of the school year, these are those additional strategies that I mentioned previously that we implemented to create that continuity of branding and marketing for the school district throughout the rest of the year. And this was, those two campaigns were already created and implemented with Lamont Digital. These were separate, things that I worked on specifically, either in-house or reaching out to these specific entities to, to put these in place. So everything from The Daily Democrat, which is a local publication in Yolo County, but it also circulates in Solano and other areas surrounding counties without, throughout our region. Univision nineteen was also something new and exciting for us. It was a great opportunity to run forty commercial ads throughout their Monday through Friday programming lineup from five AM to five PM, and that was great. We had two live interview segments on Despierta Sacramento, which is their morning show, their version of the morning show. So shout out to Stacy Tran in the audience, who actually did the whole interview in Spanish, and she did an amazing job. And to our other participant, Maria Munoz, who also did a great job with that. And then the other, in the other publications as well, the NorCal Tourism Guide, you know, we're starting to kind of peel back some of our, our efforts and see how broader can we go? Because we also know that there are a lot of families that are leaving areas such as the Bay Area, looking for a new suitable home in the Sacramento region. And with that often comes a choice of where are they going to set up their students for education. So the more forward-thinking that we can be in terms of getting on, on their radar, getting on their, in terms of their thought process, I think the better it'll benefit us down the line. And that's just a simple example of placing an ad in the Tourism Guide, and it circulates as well in various print and digital publications online. And you can see a lot of the metrics there in terms of the reach, the impressions, and the readership as well. There were several direct mailers that we also did, and then an additional series of promotional videos separate from those other campaigns that we were using throughout the last six, six to eight weeks, really. Next slide, please. So next step, we're here today to ask for the Board's approval to, to basically create a model of continuity and sustainability with Lamont Digital to not make this work a one-time occurrence, but to help us build a model where it can continue living annually. And that also is an opportunity for us to take that, that pilot kind of data, that base data that we got from those initial strategies and campaigns, and build off of it and get even more strategic with our approach and our targeting moving forward. The next step after that is really tentatively to start planning on Monday, if we're lucky to get approval from the Board this evening. And then after that, it would, it would be my goal to bring an overview or a progress overview to you sometime in the next school year so that we can evaluate the progress and see how this is going and have an accurate pulse on what we're actually hearing in terms of feedback from our community and staff as well. So with that, I appreciate your time. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I do not see any public comment. Is that correct? Or is, oh, we do have a public.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, come on, Priya.
Invest in the, the social media campaign. I just want to know, is there any way to like, you know, understand, or sorry, compute basically, like, if there is an increase in enrollment? Can we ask students or the parents, like, you know, how do they get to know about WUSC or a particular school in WUSC? So we can tie it back to the investment that we're doing in social media camp. But that's all my.
Thank you. All right, and I don't see any other public comments. So do we have board comments?
Yeah.
Sure.
Somewhere along those lines of, of kind of identifying matrix for the campaigns that we've kind of embarked on using the media. I guess I saw the, although, especially the attendance, did we use that as kind of a scale to determine when we had, I believe there was a couple of videos and a couple of emails, and did we see an increase in attendance during that period for September?
Yes, there, there was, in terms of specific numbers, I would have to provide those to the Board in an executive summary after. But there was a consistency in terms of attendance throughout the month of September. What we're trying to do also better is correlate the efforts that are being done in terms of marketing and promotions of attendance awareness and raising awareness for attendance to students actually being in the classroom. One thing that I can tell you is that what we can measure through the metrics on the backside, on the backside of these platforms, is the traffic that we get online to things like our enrollment page. And then other engagement that we get through other postings as well. One example would be that on average, the district's enrollment page probably gets around three to 500 visitors on a given month. During that month and through, I believe, January, it had about 3,300 people per month. So that's a solid uptick in traffic. Now, that's something where we can say if we're doing a particular or implementing a particular strategy during a specific period in time, we can correlate that and for the most part know that it is attributed to those efforts. The other thing that we're doing on the other end in terms of our staff is working with our folks in the Student Services Office, our Enrollment Office, so that when they do get individuals calling and inquiring about enrolling in our school list, to ask a simple survey question at the end of that call or their interaction. How did you hear about us? And give them a list of, is it online? Did you see a print ad? Did you see a sign on the side of the road somewhere? Anything along those lines will help us to fine tune that approach going forward.
Yeah. I think that's great. And I think, you know, a consistent message in September as well as throughout the year about attendance, you know, would certainly help, I think, increase our ADA. Because I do know that there's a lot of people that do tend to go on vacations, not during, you know, summertime, but during, you know, the regular school year. And that does actually impact daily. And so I'm just, I'm just interested in seeing like a year-over-year, you know, factor or matrix where we can look at this and say, hey, are we seeing tangible results? You know, growth in attendance. Especially as we get further removed from COVID and the requirements have changed, right? In terms of the way you show up. So that's just curiosity. I think this is great. Great platform. It's kind of raising awareness of, of what our community is and how great our schools are. And like you said, it was awesome seeing the seeing the little vignettes of everyone. And you go, oh, hey, I saw you, you know, and then you go to the school and you get to see that person, say hi, I saw your video, right? That's great. No, I definitely appreciate.
I appreciate too your comment about the year-to-year comparison as well. And I should clarify what I meant by sustainability earlier and that continuity is everything that we gathered this year is one-time information and data from things that we tried. And being able to build on something, at least for a couple of years, that's when we can then compare and see the efficiency and the consistency that we're hoping to achieve.
I'm excited about this campaign and investment. I have a couple of technical questions. TikTok.
Yes.
Yes, that is, and in part of this is being informed by my day job where we run a campaign and have done focus groups. You're laughing at me, but it's true. I know Carla, you see me at 5:00 AM dancing around, but I'm not going to do a TikTok. Do it.
Let's have some fun to this.
But yeah, but not, but nothing to. But specifically TikTok is not just the dances anymore. It's really how the target group of parents, as we know, at least 405 and that enrollment age, they are actually much more engaged in TikTok as well as our young people if you're doing an attendance campaign. Insta's good, but that's still kind of aging out. So the question becomes like, I'm just gonna, my wondering is like that is we need to start to develop content on TikTok. Right. So, which is really super short, like 10 second or whatever.
Absolutely. No, and that's a consideration that we're looking at. The other platform that we have earmarked for a future strategy is WhatsApp. It's a free service for messaging. But that's really big with individuals and communities that are new to the United States, to our community. And there are ways, I mean, on apps like that where you can place banner ads and different information that really speak to education in this community, the great things going on here, like we said, and all the other assets that we've created. And really just using the most, all those tools to the most of our ability. One, real quick, a funny story, as soon as you said TikTok. One interaction that I had with a group of parents this year. You know, they're non-English speakers. And one of the first things they asked me when I said who I am and what my role was is why doesn't the district have a TikTok page? And I started laughing because my father came to this country in like 1972. And at the age that he's at, he doesn't use any of those platforms or anything like that. But I think we also have to think ahead and the more that people are coming to our community, to this country, they're part of our generation, younger generations, they're more in tune with technology than, you know, we might assume that they might be. And we have to really harness the power of those technologies to do a good job in terms of telling our story and marketing the district as well.
So a few more questions. Is brand management, right? So I know that during, you know, pre-COVID, great job on brand management, what that was in COVID, we kind of lost that. So I think that my wondering is, you've probably already thought about it, is bringing what that new brand management is with a new right, that we've adopted. Because I mean, I don't know if you felt that way, but the brand manager has been a little bit loose recently. So what is, what is, who is Washington Unified? What is our brand? What is our guarantee? What are they buying? And then I'll just wrap in third is part of that is also, are we going to do focus groups? It's, I am partly saying like, well, this is really cheap. There's not a whole lot of money here for you to do all the things that I'm talking about. But even just little kind of like the, when you do little student focus groups for attendance or whatever, like how do we inform the public? Not just on the backend, but on the front end, like what are the messages you want to hear? Right? That is a little led by the community. Just some thoughts about
Okay.
that integration. But brand management is the big one, I think everybody is, because every school has a TikTok, every like, brand manager is really important, right? Because we, otherwise we feel like, well, here's this program here, there, but there's no brand management of the district.
And the consistency with that is important across the board. So I mean, whether it's a school out in the community or any part of our community, there should be a clear line to, oh, they're part of Washington Unified as well. One thing that I've been working on over the last couple of years is building specific brand guides for each of our schools with renovated and revamped logos. We have now high resolution artwork for all of our schools. What you'll probably see going around, driving around through the neighborhoods is large 80-foot banners that wrap entire fence lines. That's all done through our team too, just getting that word out there. But we want to also establish that sense and that feeling that, you know, when you're at, driving down Linden by Southport, that you're in duck country or you're in Wildcat country. We also want those schools to have their individual uniqueness to them in terms of what they offer to the community. And that's also a fun thing. And we have, I have a plan also with all of our principals to check in every summer, especially starting from last year to where we can build on this kind of brand and identity for each of their schools. And that incorporates other things like banners on their lamp posts on campus, doing other projects like wrapping the windows at River City High School that are branded with their logo and colors and incorporates other phrasing that they're familiar with, like the RISE acronym that they use at River City. So a lot of that and then tying it back into the district's brand guide as well.
The through line, the story of who we are, right? Like you want them, say from K to 12, right? Like that is, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Excited.
Appreciate it. Yes, TikTok.
Tracy Venegas.
Thank you. Thank you for all of this. Obviously, as talking about marketing and branding, it's all moving into that video, digital space. You know, I know I come back to this student tonight and I will forever, you know, being in this position is, I really do care, especially when partnering with an, like Lamont or anybody, right? When we're partnering up, the opportunity for the involvement of students and not just student voice from a focus group, but a seeing it through. There's something that happens through the process of completion. Even if it's two, three students that are just, they see it through. And the reason I mentioned this is not only, I don't know necessarily if there's a career pathway that gets connected directly, like there's already a fear, they can speak to each other, the two systems obviously, but the real world coming into our campuses and how students can get that first, how we can squeeze more out of it basically, right? Out of already the service. And I'm sure there's not a curriculum in place for development when it comes to this project, but just the hands-on experience, the pride, and then also peer influence. We are attempting to catch up to the TikTok and the, I got a night, right, Jackie? Of course, if it wasn't for Jackie, we would not be talking about TikTok, right? But it's the, it's the peer-to-peer influence that is, that we know is powerful. And as educators, sometimes we attempt to break that peer-to-peer influence or we see it as a negative. But it's how do we see it as a positive? How do we use it since it exists? And they'll tell us what cool is. They'll tell us who's, you know. So I think this is exactly what we need student involvement in is like when we're attempting to find where should we go with it? They're already there or they've already been there type of thing. This is where it reverses and they have more experience in this than we will ever catch up to, right? And that's just the reality when it comes to technology and just that social climate, that social media piece. So I would just really want to see the involvement, not just the voice, but the involvement, the hands-on. Whether it becomes a project or you give them more homework to where, you know, I'm sure something like this is re-engaging them. So that's one. And then in the, in the the images that you put up when it came to students and attendance. I know that it's, it was like more academically heavy. But I would, just all the other things that we provide as a, as a, as a district, just like our sports, our extracurricular, our VAPA, you know, just like what makes it exciting for a student. I'm thinking about, again, from a student's lens. And we're thinking about re-engaging just all the different opportunities or pathways. Because I think many times we think school, it goes straight to academics. We already know that. Just how we can use this opportunity to shine light on all the other, whether it's a student athlete speaking or it's a VAPA student, like the enthusiasm that our VAPA students have, there's no, it's priceless. You know, it sells itself type of thing. You know, when they come here and present on whatever, maybe they're, you know, they're jazzed up, right? They're really enthusiastic. And I think enthusiasm, breathing enthusiasm back into our community or our students, you know, wherever they are. So I think that, yeah, that's really it for me is just student somehow incorporating a student-led component. Because I think this is where they have the experience and we're behind the wheel. And we're all attempting to catch up. But it's clear that they know, they know how to get the followers, they know how to be, they also, it's like this is really where their voice can be impactful for us.
Thank you for that feedback.
Did you ask Tracy Venegas to wear the district logo hat and shirt today? Because I feel like you're well representing.
That's a great example of brand consistency. I know, I think our human resources office did a great job of putting those together. But when we have a clean brand guide, you can hand it to anyone and they can run with it in our offices, divisions, teams, and they do it. It's just great.
Yeah, I think it is really, that part is really exciting. We have, just thinking of our students, the pathway is the design, visual and media arts pathway at River City High School where they actually do video production and work on media and entertainment industry sector careers in the future. I know that you highlighted actually some students in that in the past and have worked with them. So I think that adding that component is, would be a great opportunity for our kids. And then one of the pieces to share that wasn't on there that I would recommend if you're not already is like the Slavic Russian Baptist Church. I know many of those students do go to Epic and other places, but I think having information there, especially when it's language specific. The Afghan Cultural Center as well, I think are good places for those. And then I wanted to add the piece about the work that you've done with branding in terms of the wraps you talked about, because those, not only are they just a cool logo to come up to, but at Riverbank and at River City, they both feel very strongly that it's a safety measure because you can see out, but you can't see in. And so I really appreciate that. And I think that many, many of our schools are asking, I think they're all asking for that. So it would be great if as a district, we had a uniform policy of if you want to wrap on the front, we will help support that with some of the district funding. I know it's going down, but that we have currently, because I think it, I think it addresses your pieces. But I also think it addresses the critical safety pieces of our most vulnerable folks in the front office, which is important. Rapper, rapper. I think the other piece is, as you're thinking about all these social media pieces, I just want to make sure and share that we're also careful with our student privacy. And so there are videos with students which have been so wonderfully done. But that we're just aware of how we're using those spaces and that we're making sure that we are being responsible with our student information on other platforms that maybe we have less control over.
Absolutely.
And then the other, another piece is I heard as you're thinking about what you need to do for moving forward, I've heard some families that say they're having a hard time with just like the enrollment packet. How do I fill out or how do I go online and do an enrollment packet? So I wonder if not this space, how we can do this is having somebody almost that friendly face of a parent walking through how to enroll their child online. So the actual, how do you actually do it now that you are here to make it easy for them? And I think that those are my big pieces on that. I thought when I first looked at this contract, I thought to myself, for your robust department, does it make more sense to hire a position that you could have work with you to do this? Although I know that now with funding places of where we're going, we don't necessarily want to add long-term pieces. So I just want to make sure I understand your vision in terms of what this looks like next year, because this is a hefty contract. Is this something that you are thinking it's the one time you get the data, as you said, and then in the future it looks different? Or would another person be helpful? So can you just?
Great question. I mean, that's something that we would really have to look at a little bit more closely and evaluate the direction that we're going as an organization. And as you mentioned, there's a lot of different things that go into that particular equation. With regard to this specific item, my vision is to really build a sustainable plan that can be replicated year after year. And truthfully, the bulk of that effort will probably be in the first year. And what I mean is each year after this, we could probably pare down on some of the support services that we would be receiving from Lamont because the model is there. And then at that point, you know, it's plug and play with certain strategies. And we would really be using them for some of the more hard cost services, like helping with production of videos. And they have all the equipment, the people that know how to do all the editing that can support me with that. I can still offset certain costs with in-house design or writing of scripts and doing all of that pre-production that goes into a particular video and all that. But there's things that we can adjust after that. And again, it also gives us the opportunity to see how things go month to month. And it doesn't lock us into any particular agreement for too long without a particular out at that point.
Okay. Thank you for that. And just as a final piece before you came here, I just want to give a shout out that was there any way to email the entire community, like through constant contact of information of what was happening, for example, in board meetings and others? Was that happening before you came?
With board meetings? Before?
Yeah.
Well, before I came, I don't believe there was much happening in terms of communications to the larger residents.
You can just say no.
Yeah, no.
Were we on Instagram, Facebook, any of those platforms?
Facebook was the only social media platform when I started in 2015. It had about 98 followers. We're about 3,300 now, which is really, it's pretty good for us considering the city of West Sacramento, and this is no shade on my counterpart who's a communications officer here. But they're a much, in terms of their audience, they're a lot larger than our school district. There's roughly 45, 50,000 residents. And they have about 5,000, 6,000 followers. So that's pretty good growth for us. But then our engagement is also very positive across the board. I mean, again, no shade on anyone, but we have really good stories to tell and we have a lot of great things to showcase. And that really is a testament to our students, our teachers, our classified staff across the board and the people at the district office, everyone that is really doing a good job to make our district a destination.
Right. And the logos and logos done with clip art. I mean, a parent actually said to me, you know, our new logo is really great for our school, although I did make the last one on clip art. It's like, you're the one that made the last one. So thank you for all that. My, the point is there's a lot that's happened. So I think that we're ready to, unless there's any comments, ready to move this forward.
My second.
Okay. So moved by Tracy Pizatti, seconded by Tracy Venegas, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you for the support.
Okay. And that now takes us to the math adoption. Approval of the K5 Math Adoption Curriculum with McGraw-Hill, Matt Ainsworth, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Learning.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, President Kirby.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Vice President Wong, trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, and Cabinet. At the May 4, 2023 Curriculum Council meeting, the council recommended moving forward with the K5 Math Pilot Teachers Recommendation, McGraw-Hill Reveal Math as the elementary math curriculum, beginning in the 23-24 school year for a total of eight years. A public hearing was held on May 11 at the WSD Regular Board of Education meeting on the adoption recommendation. The financial impact of this eight-year K5 Math adoption, $937,000, $937.77 and 36 cents, and will be paid with instructional material funds. Tonight, we are requesting for board approval of McGraw-Hill Reveal Math for adoption for our K5 math program.
Are there any public comments? I have none that I'm seeing.
No public comment.
All right, any board comments? Nope.
I move for the math lovers.
Yes. And I want to make sure that, unless I, unless you said it, and I apologize, but I'm not seeing that this, just so that everybody is aware, that as changes come with the math standards, that the commitment is that this will be adjusted.
Right. So for the first year to, we will, it'll be the national model until the, the framework is adopted. And then at no charge, we get the whole new set of California standards.
Perfect. So when you hear changes are coming, we're already, thank you. Okay, so it was moved by Vice President Wong.
Second.
For the math lovers.
My daughter calls it mental anguish to all humans.
Trustee Venegas.
Not anymore.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye, two vote aye for all children lovers of math and to-be lovers of math.
Thank you.
All right. The approval of resolution number 2223-63, requesting the Yolo County Board of Supervisors establish a tax rate for bonds expected to be sold during the fiscal year of 2023-24, and authorizing necessary actions in connection therefore. Monique Sobal, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
It's a very long resolution. I'm really excited about bringing this forward because it's a continuation of our Measure Z bond and where we're going with that particular bond. In June 2021, we had our first issuance of our Measure Z bond. Just a reminder for the community and those listening in, our West Sacramento community voted on a $150 million bond back to 2020 to be able to support our facilities so we can better support our students. And the board approved a tentative plan to be able to issue or sell bonds. And that plan included selling of bonds in June 2021, in June 2023, and then in June 2025. We're here in June 2023. And what we're asking is for you to approve this resolution that, in essence, authorizes us to ask the county office of supervisors to begin issuing basically the, or receiving the tax, taxes from the property owners for the bond. We do plan to sell bonds this year. We just don't know exactly when, because we're looking at market conditions. We're working with our financial advisors, our bond counsel, to do it at the right time, so that we will be able to get really. And so this evening, we're here to request your approval of this resolution, which is step one in the issuance. As a reminder, before we actually sell bonds, we'll be back with you again to get approval so that we can actually begin that sale. So this is a multi-phase process.
Okay, I don't see any public comments. And so do we have any board comments? Can I just clarify, as you say, you're looking carefully at the market. I know inflation impacts people investing in bonds. Does that impact us in terms of what's happening right now with our selling of bonds?
Inflation impacts everything, which in turn impacts the Fed in looking at rates. And when rates go up or rates goes down, then people who want to make investments, then they make decisions based on. What we're looking at right now mostly is interest rates. We're also looking at the stability of, of the, just the general market, the Dow, et cetera, so that we can make our best guess on who's going to want to come into the market.
Thank you for that. All right, can I get a motion? All right, moved by Vice President Wong.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Pizotti, all in favor.
Aye.
Local.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Okay, trustee Pizotti.
Aye.
Vice President Wong.
Aye.
Trustee Venegas.
Aye.
And I too.
Thank you.
Okay. So now that takes us to another resolution. The adoption of resolution number 2223-65 of the Board of Education ratifying the district purchasing from Dell Technologies via the National Association of State Procurement Officials, master agreement. Again, Monique Sobal, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. At this time, I am joined with our Director of Technology, Brian Briggs, to be able to answer any technical questions you may. We are requesting your approval of this resolution to allow us to purchase from the National Association of State Procurement Officials, also known as NASPO, master agreement. The benefit of allowing us to be able to purchase through NASPO is it gets us better prices. It gets us faster services. We have contracts that are already vetted and pre-approved, so that when we need to make decisions really quickly but correctly for our students, keeping our fiscal aspects in mind, we're able to do that more. So we're asking for your approval of this resolution, resolution to authorize us to be able to purchase off of the NASPO master.
Any public comments? Are there any board comments?
No, I have just one, since you're here, Brian, on technology, even though not this. But thank you for, you know, it's such a gift that all of our kids who are staying in our district can take home a computer this summer. And even my younger daughter said, "Mom, this," she clearly listens to her teacher, "this summer, I could keep working on all of my district work." And so I just think that it's, you know, it is a huge gift that most districts don't do. And I just want to really thank you for that, because I think it's really important for access. Okay.
What did your daughter say, Kobe?
Looking at that.
Maybe Kobe can have a little playdate and convince her.
Please.
All right. So with that, I will move this resolution. And is there a second?
A second?
Okay, and seconded by Vice President Wong, trustee Venegas.
Aye.
Vice President Wong.
Aye.
I vote aye. Trustee Pizotti.
Aye.
Okay. All right, oh, aye. Now we have the approval of the purchase of the Dell YX Ray System to serve as part of the district's network hardware. I'm Monique Sobal, Assistant Superintendent. Brian Briggs.
So thank you for approving the previous item on the agenda for the NASPO master agreement. Now that that's been approved, we're asking for your approval of this particular purchase for the XREL system, which will be able to support our net.
I don't have any comments. Are there any board comments? Okay, can I get a motion?
Move.
Okay, moved by trustee Venegas, seconded by trustee Pizotti, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you. Okay, that takes us through all of our agenda down to our board governance. We do not have any board governance listed here, but we'll talk about that with future board agenda items. So we have our board superintendent comments. And Dr. Hildreth, you are on.
Good evening, trustees, colleagues and community. I want to thank everyone who's a part of the WUSD family, our certificated and classified staff, our management and leadership, our families, and of course, our trustees. Together, we've completed another school year, and thousands of youth in this great community have received dedicated and heartfelt support from our entire team. I want to thank everyone for everything you continue to do on behalf of our schools. And we hope that you all enjoy some well-deserved rest during the summer recess. And to our students who might be studying civic engagement and want to watch our board meeting, you continue to amaze us with your steadfast commitment to your studies, your peers, and your community. We are incredibly proud of our, your accomplishments, and we wish you all the best as you prepare for the next phase of your educational and life journey. Next, I want to give a shout out for our LGBTQIA+ community. As June is Pride Month, our core values in WUSD include providing a safe, peaceful, and healthy environment for all students and staff, and supporting collaboration with diverse communities and families. By recognizing Pride Month, our community has an opportunity to stand united, to combat bullying, harassment, and discrimination based on actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Annually, the board adopts a resolution in honor of the occasion, and we invite everyone to join the celebration and honor the identities and contributions of WUSD LGBTQIA+ students, staff, and families. I also want to highlight that June is also National Gun Violence Prevention Month, a crucial reminder of the urgent need to address this pressing issue. Every year, countless lives are tragically lost to gun violence, causing immense pain and suffering in our communities. Raising awareness can foster dialogue and mobilize efforts to implement effective gun control measures, enhance mental health resources, and promote education on responsible firearm ownership. The board also adopted a resolution about responsible firearm storage earlier this year to increase student and school safety. This includes a parent notification about safe firearm storage that is now sent home annually to WUSD families. Together, we can strive for safer neighborhoods and work towards a future free from the devastating impact of gun violence. I want to make sure everyone knows that WUSD is offering a free summer mini-session about parenting with positive discipline for all ages, beginning on June 13. These sessions have received phenomenal engagement throughout the school year, and we're excited to offer summer mini-sessions for our families. Session details are available on our website and our social media pages. We're preparing for the Westfield Village School Modernization. And so on June 5, that marked the official launch of the Westfield Village School Modernization Project, with crews already on the ground, beginning the preparation and demolition process. Our team, together with the contractor, organized a free snow cone social on Friday, June 2, at the campus, inviting members of the school community and surrounding neighborhood to swing by and have some Kona ice, view renderings of the new campus designed, and ask questions about the change. We also have a dedicated project webpage built under our website's facilities, construction, and planning section, where anyone can visit to receive more information about the project. Additionally, our team sent a postcard notification to all of the residences within a 3,000-foot radius of the school campus, informing them of the project and the potential for increased noise and activity. Lastly, we want to express our appreciation and gratitude to the voters of West Sacramento, who authorized the Measure Z bond on November 3, 2020, which is paying for this important project. We hope you're as excited as we are to make this investment in one of our legacy campuses. Another highlight, we have the Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association, APAPA, chapter serving the Davis and greater Sacramento areas. They invite all high school students to the Youth Leadership Academy for 2023. And the Youth Leadership Academy helps high school students, especially our juniors and seniors, as they prepare their college application. The future topics include public speaking, professional development, finding their authentic voice, resume writing and interviewing skills, civic and engagement, and more. Events are held on the 3rd Saturday of June, July, and August at the APAPA headquarters at 4,000 Pruxell Road, Suite 3 in Sacramento. More information is available on our website and our social media pages. Lastly, I want to thank everyone for your support and condolences for the loss of my dad. He was a great man who was blessed to live for 87 years and be happily married for 64. I am a girl dad and will carry on his legacy as someone who was born in the 1930s, when the rights for all people were not equal. He focused on education as the path for success. He received his BA from Southern University in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, where he majored in mathematics, minored in science and music. He received his masters in science and education from the University of Southern California. Fight on. He was the youngest principal in the history of LA Unified in the early 1970s. And I am who I am because of him. And for that, I am truly grateful. And with that, I'll turn it out. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for sharing your dad with us. And thank you to him for sharing you with us as well, because I know that, that you were pulled back and forth many times. And we're just really grateful for you and for him. Thank you. Okay, trustee Pizotti.
Let's see, where do I start? So I'll start with, let's see, we had graduation and promotion week. I was busy. I hit, I think, eight different graduations and promotions throughout the week. When was it? The week of the 1st or 31st, whatever that was last week. Yeah, that one. So I hit Bridgeway Island's kindergarten, 5th grade, and 8th grade promotion, Westmore Oaks 8th grade promotion, Westfield's 8th grade promotion, Yolos, Washington Middle College, and River City High's graduation. It was very interesting to see how so many of the kids reacted differently to the promotion and, and how excited and thrilled they all were, you know, even at the different grade levels. And by the way, kindergartners promoting when they're wearing little suits is about the easiest thing you're ever going to want, ever going to want to see. Anyway, I just, this is my favorite time of year, because we get to see the promise of our youth, right? You get to see everybody grow up and, and kind of mature and just one more year, move on. And it, it just is so amazing to see our, our high school move on and be, you know, college students or who, members of the labor force or go on to a technical school or go into the military and see how proud they are of what they had accomplished, what they're going to go do. So I, I just love this time of year. The facilities subcommittee met this week, and we largely discussed our potential options for the Oakhorn Modernization Project. And, you know, we'd been given information, and after that, we've kind of given direction to go back out for an RFP, not liking some of the options that we were given. So we are going to, we gave direction to Assistant Superintendent Sobal to put forth a new RFP that is kind of slate, not going off of our current list of contracts that we already have. And then congratulations to Audrey Street for the job on the Assistant Super Ed Services. We are eager to have you, and hopefully you are eager to join us. And as you can see, we're kind of an informal group here, but we are a lot of fun. And, and you, you won't see us yelling and screaming at Eddie. That, that just doesn't happen often.
Often.
And then finally, I just wanted to say, Cheryl, we're very sorry. I understand how pain is, and I'm sure. I understand how pain is and I'm sure we all have felt that, that kind of loss before. But I am terribly, terribly sorry that, especially, you know, throughout you have our sympathy and our thought.
Hey, trustee Vanegas.
All right, well, yeah, I'll start with, uh, thank you for that short bio. I think that, you know, I've been fortunate enough to, to serve on this board three years. And this has been my only experience. And every time I get asked, so how's the board going? It, it almost sounds like they're waiting for a, a negative or a complaint. But I, but I say, you know, the, the board is really, they've taught me a lot, but, but we're, you know, in sharing that short bio, I think what we have in common is we all are, are grounded in our why and, and we have our anchor and we know where we come from. And when we serve our community with that, and it goes across the district, it's, it's a really beautiful thing. So thank you for, for sharing that and acknowledging that. I, uh, this week I was traveling, going to other board meetings because of partnerships. And I took my nephews with me. They were, their, their summer is, is with Uncle Alice, so they work with me. They, and they get to do all of it from waking up at four in the morning to work out. They don't have a bedtime, but they do have to be up by four. So they get to make decisions, so they go to sleep early. They go to sleep early, so. So just in showing them and them seeing the numbers and the LCAP and just understanding and asking questions and really that much money? So how come we don't get, and this is in other cities, this is not West Sacramento. But it's just ultimately them seeing it and again, bringing family into it. And again, what you, you know, what your dad did for you and you carry that on. And just again, what we're all doing and the essence of it. And, and also the graduations, I got to only go to Yolo High and River City. And it just brought me back to when I first started working in, in West Sacramento before joining the board, some of those students that were in Alcorn, that I would get the call, you know, to come and speak with that particular group of students that were, that were disengaged at the time and not really seeing their future or their pathway. But seeing them both at River City and both at Yolo and having those conversations and almost just looking at them like I told you to just focus and how, how, how happy and proud they were of themselves is, is really, was really powerful to experience this past week. So again, thank you. Thank you to all the individuals who are hands-on and just really pouring, pouring from a place of, of, of your why. And, and it, it's really felt throughout the community. So a lot of celebration around West Sacramento, so gracias.
Thank you. Vice President Wong.
Yeah, no. Thank you for who you are. He's proud, we're proud. So thank you, thank you for that. And yeah, so only one thing I'm thinking about is we're having our first annual Juneteenth that we are co-sponsoring with the city and the, the county supervisor and others. So on the June 16, at Bridgeway Lakes, 5:30 to 8:30, please come out for, for the district co-sponsored event. Really just, just, yeah, just thank you for everybody because it is always really powerful to see the kids graduating, the embraces. Like I, you look at them, you go like, you were just in kindergarten. I just gave you a kindergarten gift. How are you in, like, how, how are you sitting here, like, graduating from that? That's not right because even though I have, I'm a young ARP cardholder, it still doesn't feel right. But really proud of us, proud of what we've done together and through kind of difficult times. Our family keeps growing, Audrey, Audrey. So hopefully it is, we may seem like we're yelling at each other, but the truth is that we are, it is brotherly, sisterly fights because at the end of the day, it is our hearts' work and we are grateful to be here. And that's what you see in our discussion, like, through and through. So that's it for me.
Um, thank you all. I think you might not have seen, and I appreciated the piece you brought up, Dr. Hildreth, with Pride Month and then also with the work of blinking Moms Demand Action is who's always here with us. And you remind gun violence awareness, so thank you, yes. Um, so I appreciate you bringing up both of those. And I think I want to also just give a shout out to our community because we have such a supportive community here. And you may have seen what happened in Glendale Unified. They have a supportive board as well. However, you know, they had a lot of turmoil and we, we know that that is happening sometimes in the communities. And our neighbors are dealing with those things as well in terms of around issues, especially with our LGBTQ plus youth and families and staff. And so I'm very, very grateful for our community that they stand up and they stand up strong, as does all of our staff and our community. There, yeah, it was just last week, but so that was a lot happening. And, you know, you think normally this is a time for a pause, little break. No, no, not because there is the English Learner Dual Immersion Extended Year Institute happening, right? Right now with students. There are camps happening across our district with more students than we've ever served. There are, man, Camp Yampas coming up, just there's so much happening and it's all good. It's all really good. I'm hearing exciting things from kids about the camp that's happening at schools, especially with our vendors who've done, you know, the tennis and golf that we've had before. And they're really having a good time with all those pieces and really meeting the needs of the whole child. So I appreciate that, but I know that everyone needs a little bit of a break too. So I hope that, that that can be taken into account, that everybody takes care of themselves because it's a lot to go, go, go and keep going. So thank you for that. I also, the promotions are, they were all at the same time. I think every single one except for one. And so, you know, it's like running from one to another and parking at some of our schools is, is not good. And so trying to get to a promotion and then park really far away and run to it and leave early. And so of course, it's not about us, it's about the kids. But to have the staff out, I think it would be nice if they could have a little bit of staggering because I know that district staff tries to cover all of them too. So to give a little bit of, of ease on that, maybe if they were staggered at least by 30 minutes, a couple of them, that might help a little bit. But the, the whole, all of the graduations and promotions, as you spoke to, were just really special and appreciated. And I want to also acknowledge the statements that we heard earlier. And we, we have to be careful with our board comments and what we say around negotiations or anything like that. But I want to acknowledge that when we have staff members that say things like they're worried about experiencing homelessness, that we as a district are wrap our arms around that and that somebody follows up and makes sure that we are providing, you know, helping connect services because we need to make sure that, that people have services just like our students and families, our staff has to be taken care of as well. So I'm asking that there's follow-up there and that we can make sure to connect with some of our services. And with that, yes, welcome to our new Assistant Superintendent. And we are, as I know you are ready, it's busy work and exciting work and we're glad. Thank you. Okay. All right, and that now takes us to our future board agenda items. I'm going to read these and then you can let me know if anyone has another they'd like. We have our Brown Act of Ed, um, sorry, our Education Brown Act Training Board of Education. And I do want to say why this is up, weaving into my board comments for the public, that we did just learn last evening, Vice President Wong and I were at the CSBA Roadshow and they did clarify and talk about the laws around teleconferencing into board meetings. There is the new law AB 2449, which is very much about emergencies or traveling for state business. And it, there's some very strong language around it that we were using and thought that we needed to go by. But we can also, in addition to that, board members can use the old language as well, where they are calling in as long as in that case, it is posted and open to the public. So AB 2449, you do not need all those postings. So for example, if you are sick or something and you cannot come to the board meeting, you don't want to open your home for people to come in, in that situation. So you don't need to post your home address. But if we're using the old laws, you do need to post an address, but we can use both. And so I want to make sure that as the public maybe sees new things happening, that that's why, because we now have better clarification around that. And I'm sure that we'll also talk about that during the Brown Act.
And one point of change, we were just notified earlier today that we may need to change the date of the Brown Act training based on the availability of the presenter. So we will be coming back to you with some alternative dates.
Do they know how hard it is to get all of us together and that we had said yes?
That's what, that's what I said too, so.
Well, now we know that people can call in differently and be virtual.
I was very excited to tell our presenter, I have everybody on board. And she said, I have to reschedule, so I can't win. Thank you.
All right, well.
Now have a chart though.
Thank you for trying.
Study on your own.
We do have a chart, okay. Well, we have some more flexibility. We have our district safety update that will be happening June 22. We also have approval of the board governance calendar, which will be June 22 as well. And then the approval for student plans for, or school plans for student achievement, June 22. And then the budget approval, um, June 22 as well. Are there any other future board agenda items? Oh, we will be finalizing our superintendent evaluation. So we'll make sure that that is on the next as well. And the LCAP. Perfect, and adopting the LCAP. Are there any others? Okay, well, we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a good meeting. All right, with that, we will adjourn.